President, I declare this meeting open on Monday the twenty third of June at six oh one P M. The city of Swan acknowledges the traditional custodians of this region, the Wadjaq people of the Nogar Nation, and their continuing connection to the land, waters and community. And we pay our respects to elders past, present and their descendants. The terms and conditions of entry into this meeting are posted on the door just as you enter. And please ensure that you have read them prior to attending this meeting and abide by them. Attendance and apologies, we have all council members in attendance tonight, councillor Bowman is attending electronically. Good evening councillor Bowman. And do you declare that you can meet the confidentiality regulations?
I do.
Thank you. And I have no apologies for this evening. Not yet, but we'll just see if she comes in next few minutes, so. So no apologies though, at this point though, I haven't had an apology from councillor Britovny. Part four is declarations of financial proximity interests and interest affecting impartiality. Are there any councillor members that need to submit a declaration of interest? There is, if you could just hand that up to the C E O please. Part five, public question time, questions and answers recorded in the minutes of the meeting may be summarised in accordance with the local government administration regulations of nineteen ninety six. Five point one point one, questions of which due notice has been given and there have been, nil. Is there anyone in the gallery that is not registered who wishes to ask a question relating to items in the agenda? Miss Madam? And you have five questions.
Thank you. Um, first I would like to refer to this, may I ask how many objections have you got for this rate rise? Because I couldn't, didn't have time to count them all.
Uh, I'll just ask through staff, thank you. Mister Travaskas?
Through the chair, just to clarify, was that how many submissions or objections? On the, um, I think we had six, total of six hundred and six submissions. Um, of at least six of those, or at least five of those were for an increase. So I'd say six hundred at least for objections, yeah.
Do you have a second question?
I do, um, last meeting you presented a very impressive budget with double the profit from the financial year before. And I would like to ask, in light of the budget that you have, or the financial report that you have submitted in the last meeting, what is the justification for having a rate rise that is much higher than inflation?
Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, and Miss Turner, the only questions you can ask tonight are related specifically to differential rates or fees and charges, you can't ask questions regarding the budget, uh, you can only do that at the, at the budget meeting.
I did not ask about the budget, I only asked about rates, so why are we changing rates?
Now, through the chair, your question was about the operating surplus, which is a calculation in the budget papers, so tonight's questions are only about differential rates.
My apology, I will rephrase.
I can simply point out, if that's all right, through the chair, the calculated differential rates are sufficient to meet the deficit, which is what's required under the Local Government Act, where there's the difference between what you raise of your own source income and you're made to raise for rates. So they are a zero balanced outcome, where the, where the rates that are proposed to raise will only raise sufficiently in- income to meet the operating deficit.
I'll take your oath for it. Do you have a third question? No, that's it, thank you. I'll ask again, is there anyone in the gallery that's not registered who wishes to ask a question relating to the items in the agenda tonight? Hello, if you'd like to come up and just state your name? There we go, just pop it down a bit lower if you need it. Since I'm a shorty.
Yeah, so my name's Jane Masuga, I live in Gigi Ganap, so this new rate zoning does affect me, plus everybody in my area, I think, majority of people anyway. And my I can't believe that we haven't received enough notice and there's still another meeting going ahead on Thursday at Kungamia. But you're here tonight and you're going to vote on this. So how, how is that, you know?
Okay.
Relevant, plus your meetings are usually downstairs in the town hall and this is the second time we've had to come through the library upstairs and here. So this is reflected on how many people are here. There, there's only, what, eight or seven? Yeah. And that was exactly the same as last time. We found it only by accident.
Okay, we'll, we'll definitely take that, uh, feedback and we'll make sure we improve that for next year, the signage and we'll, we'll get as much notification out.
Next year's too late though, for what you're bringing in now.
Okay, well I'll take that feedback, thank you, but I'll also ask the C E O, I would like to respond.
And thank you for the question, I, I, I think you may have a misapprehension. So the material you've received now, which is about the U V rates and the U V rate review is nothing for consideration by council tonight. So that's a whole exercise where we're undertaking the consultation. Now, the U V rates which are proposed in the review, the change which you're referring to is not for consideration tonight. So we just have the standard rate structure, which is what we've been adopting for the last many, many years. That's what council's considering tonight, it's nothing to do with the review that's going on now on whether properties should have their rating changed from U Vs or G R Vs.
Okay, all right, well in relation to that, I went through the annual report and how can a shire with a surplus of over one billion dollars turn around and say they need to increase people's rates by another, what, four percent? You did it last year, you increased them last year, you voted on it last year. And now you're voting on increasing them again when you've got such a huge surplus.
We're happy to, to meet with you afterwards and just show you, but there's not a billion dollar operating surplus. The city has some three, the city has some three billion dollars worth of assets. We don't have an operating surplus anywhere near, we, we, the whole budget's designed to break even. So this year's budget, again, is predicated on raising enough rates to cover the difference between what we have for our own source revenue, fees and charges, and what we get from grants, so we can cover all the costs of service. But if you'd like, the director of corporate services here, he's more than happy to meet with you afterwards and just show you, so you understand how the numbers come together.
Yes, that would be a bonus. Okay, and as to voting for things, the city of Swan is a corporation, is it not? Are you a corporation?
No.
According to what I've looked up online, you are. And the people, the shareholders of that corporation are ratepayers and residents of the city of Swan. So therefore we are the ones that should be voting on this as a shareholder and not councillors.
So through the chair if I can, so the local governments are under the control of the Local Government Act. Corporations are under the co- control of the Corporations Act. The city of Swan is not a corporation. The city is a body corporate, but it's not, it's different to being a corporation. So in your case, you elect your leaders by way of a vote through local government elections, but you don't elect people on a board. And that's the, the reality, but I know those questions aren't related specifically to differential rates and things up for consideration tonight. But when you catch up with Mister Travaskas afterwards, he's happy to probably explain a bit more of that to you.
Okay, another question in regards to local government. In nineteen eighty eight.
I've just gotta just reiterate that tonight it has to specifically be about.
Relevant though, this is relevant because you're saying that this comes from local government. Now, there was a referendum held in nineteen eighty eight and the people were asked if they would like local government. It was a outstanding no. People said no, and yet here we are, we have local government.
Yeah, that's something I'm afraid that we're able to change, but, uh, we're happy to discuss that after the, the meeting. But tonight specifically is questions about the agenda, items in the agenda. So do you have any other questions at all that you wanted to ask about, uh, the rates tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll ask, is there any other members in the gallery that, uh, haven't registered that wish to ask a question? No, thank you very much, those people in the gallery for their questions. Um, part six, which is deputations, we had nil for this evening. And part seven, our presentations, tonight we have a presentation on asset funding, which will be presented by Mister Philip Draber, who is the independent presiding member from the city's Audit Risk and Improvement Committee, and Mister Finn MacLeod, the manager of asset management. So this will be about a ten or fifteen minute presentation.
Okay, yeah, question, Madam Mayor, why is this in the meeting procedures, local law?
Sorry, can you say that again?
Where is this in the meeting procedures, local law or the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you, as you'd be aware, the purpose advertised, which covers the reason for the meeting, included three items. First, receive a presentation. The second, to consider differential rate, and the third, to consider the, um, the fees and charges. So the meeting procedure simply governs, governs the process and presentations are dealt with at this point in time.
Thank you, thanks Mister Draber.
Uh, thank you elected members, ratepayers and staff i- in the, uh, city. Uh, tonight's presentation really is, um, the production of what the council's governance framework is really all about. Uh, some time ago, when we got the last set of financial statements that were ordered by the Office of the Auditor General in there, we identified that one of the performance in, uh, indicators that are reported on in relation to, uh, long-term asset replacement, uh, wasn't quite there and potentially had, uh, uh, had the ability to put the, um, community at some sort of risk. So to that end, what we, at the, um, Audit and Risk Committee, and then we agreed that we will get an independent, um, audit done. And that audit was tabled at the last, um, Audit and Risk, uh, and Improvement Committee in, in May, and, uh, it was, uh, for the members who were present that were, uh, he included the mayor and councillor Bowman and who, who else was, that was it maybe. Uh, anyway, either, it, it did not make for, uh, really, really good reading. And, um, there was some discussion around the table, as there always, um, is, um, about the audit reports in there. Uh, and one of the outcomes was that, uh, we, uh, an agreement was sought to perhaps consider looking at the stewardship, particularly the replacement of, um, uh, council a- assets, uh, in there um, as a, uh, an item on the strategic risk register, because certainly it is about, uh, tonight's presentation is about an identified strategic risk and whether or not this really for council members fits within your agreed risk appetite statement, uh, to which I have spoken, uh, uh, to the, to the council, uh, in about February this year. Uh, I must immediately thank Finn MacLeod for helping pull a lot of this, uh, uh, material together and the whole of the City of Swan team. And it, it draws on data held by the engineering teams, the, uh, accounting and financial management teams and the planning team and with some input, uh, uh, from the C E O. So without further ado, Finn, would you'd like to take over from here?
Thanks, um, this was a pretty basic one, just to begin with, just showing the number of assets that we have at the city of Swan. Um, we're the largest local government by, by area in the metro area. Uh, this is the numbers of assets we had at the end of twenty three, twenty four financial year. At the end of this financial year, we'll see pretty much all of those numbers continue to, to raise as we construct and receive more assets. Um, currently our assets, our hard and infrastructure assets and our property plant and equipment is valued at three point two billion. And yeah, it's growing very, very quickly. Um, important to note that that three point two billion figure doesn't include any of our natural assets as well, so if you add that on top, it gets significantly bigger. Uh, through the, the budget process, um, you'll see lots of different items on the capital works budget, um, that relate to our assets, um, the four main things we do. We dispose of assets, not very often, but we do, do, do that occasionally. We construct new assets, we upgrade our existing assets and we renew our assets. Um, we generally do a pretty good job of new, we get a lot of new assets, we're a growth council. Um, we continue to receive them, we continue to build them to service our community. Um, we do a little bit of upgrading our assets to meet the growing demands and needs, particularly in things like our buildings where, um, they often need an upgrade to be functional for how user demands are changing over time. And renewal is just that, when we just replace our assets with effectively the same thing, or bring them back up to scratch, repair all the defects and, and get back to the current standard, restore their useful life. Uh, I know you've seen this slide probably plenty of times before, but I think it's a really important slide to again highlight the asset management lifecycle and the asset lifecycle, probably pointing to the right-hand side first. Um, we start at the top generally, we strategize, we plan, we look at what's needed for the community, what's more assets required in what places to provide the services that our community need, what buildings are they needed so they can have their community events, um, pavilions, recreation centres, what ovals do they need? What roads do they need for transport links, what drainage infrastructure? We then design that asset, create it, then the biggest part of that asset lifecycle is maintain and operate that asset through its life, get to renewal, renew the asset, maybe upgrade it and at the end of life dispose of it. Now, looking at the left-hand side, this is how an asset tends to deteriorate over its time, or over its life. So when an asset's new and in good condition, it's, tends to stay in a relatively good condition for a period of time. And through most of it, like, its life, it stays in that good condition. It then will tend to quite rapidly deteriorate, um, towards the end of its life. And I think a really good example of this is potholes, how often have you seen a pothole in a road? And it starts a small pothole and then it grows and another pothole forms and it grows and it grows and it grows. Um, and that's that, that's that point where it starts really falling off a cliff and deteriorating really quickly. So we, when we're as, when we're planning for asset management, we don't want to be hitting that point. We want to be renewing and maintaining our assets at a higher standard, so we're not seeing that massive drop off in condition of our assets, where we also often have very high maintenance and renewal costs. We're looking to replace things slightly earlier than that, if you're spending less money over time and overall over the life of an asset, be spending less on maintaining and operating that asset. So it's a very simple graph here, looking at the condition of our assets as they were at the end of twenty three, twenty four. Um, and overall that graph looks really good. And that's to be expected because most of our assets are relatively new. Um, we're a growth council, we're receiving lots of new assets, we're, um, building lots of new assets. And they tend to dwarf just in volume some of our older assets that are there. Um, what's important to note though is we do have some of those assets in that worst condition, in the red and the oranges there. And all those assets, doesn't matter what condition they're in currently, they're audit irrigating and they're all coming up for renewal. Um, so we need, we need to prepare for that and be able to fund those renewals when they do come. So at a high level, what are the benefits of renewing our assets? I think the biggest thing, it's, the community can see it, is it's the amenity of our area, it's how we provide nearly all of our services. The assets really are the heart of, of all of it, what we do. Or nearly all of our services rely on assets for us to be able to deliver them, whether that's a service like recreation services that we offer through our leisure centres and ovals, things in our buildings, community transport, yeah, even, even the buildings the staff work out of, allowing us to provide services. Um, and this, the importance of this is reflected in our S C P measures, um, particularly under the built environment, which you can see on the screen there. Um, and unfortunately, nearly all of those measures in the latest community perception survey decreased quite significantly. Um, the best way for us to be able to increase these measures and show the community that we are looking after assets and providing these services to them, is to maintain the assets we've got, as I said, they're constantly deteriorating. Lift up that level of service that we're providing or maintain the level of service that we're providing. The image here on the right-hand side shows two light posts, one that was at the end of life on the right-hand side, the new one we put in just before removing the one on the, the, the previous one. The old one was spending, was spending lots of money and maintaining it frequently, it wasn't L E Ds, so the operating costs were significantly higher. We've replaced that with a new one, the new one provides. The new one provides increased light to the park and to the path areas, it provides a higher level of service. Uh it costs us less to operate because it's an LED as opposed to the old incandescent that was in, or the halogen that was in the previous light. And the pole has got newer materials and coatings which last longer than the old life, uh than the old light. So we're finding a better level of service for less money. It's costing us less day to day. Back to Phil.
Can you get, flick on to that previous slide, thanks. Um before we move on to this slide in there, I'll um get the previous slide in there. If you have a look at that column with lots of red ink in there, I mean, so that's an alarming uh thing for any person with an accounting uh background, but it really does talk to sustainability and livability of the city in there. And again, you have to have a look at this in your strategic, in your risk appetite statements in there. There were some statements about whether or not these sorts of uh changes can actually be uh within the city uh cities' agreed risk appetite statement. Okay, the appetite statement does allow for variation from year on and year in, but it says, right, you can take some uh long-term increased risk, but over the long term, you've got to bring it back into line. And this is a c- a case in there, an asset uh replacement does actually fit in there. The question is now, and that uh present uh the slide which we saw uh at uh the, on the asset lifecycle, uh in there demonstrates that. You won't see these things fall apart now, but as sure as heck in ten years' time, you will start to see them. And that really does pose some uh uh problems, because in ten years' time, as hopefully I will demonstrate to you with some uh numbers in here, the cost of replacement starts to really significantly increase at greater than the rate of refla- uh inflation, and in that period, the uh city will have lost an opportunity uh to actually grow its asset base and get a rate of return far greater than any um uh uh um uh bank account term deposit in there. This is what this is about. Yeah, uh the about, if you have a look on the uh uh the uh asset management strategy, that's our current or our last twelve-month-old um uh uh performance indicators from the local government department, they're benchmarks. You can take this there in any city council in there. Fabulous opportunity for people here to actually then comment upon, have a look at how are we actually performing? The upside of looking at our sustainability and our consumption ratios and our renewal ratios, is there an opportunity here by being smart now, and I certainly, like any other rate payer, acknowledge the pain that goes into increased rates and all the rest. We, none of us like to do it. But again, we're in public office in there and we've got to separate our personal, um as opposed to um uh uh stewardship responsibilities here. There is an opportunity for the city to actually get the march on our competitors. We are a development council, we are a strategic logistics hub, we are a tourist destination. We are also very, very popular as far as uh livability, because our, most of our uh urban land is still relatively close to the uh City of Perth, and that in turn creates opportunities for us. So if we can have a look at the next page. So there's some opportunities here. The point that I made this current map here, it shows you where this shortfall is going. At the moment, the first ten years, eight million dollars a year. Uh eight million dollars. Second uh uh is fifteen and then eighteen million dollars a year. In terms of uh future values put in time now, that's in actual fact uh by foregoing this investment, you forego, forego, foregoing a rate of return by my estimate of twelve point three five percent. Now, these were calculations done on the back of a pretty dodgy envelope um uh today. But basically, yeah, it's effectively by going as we are at the moment. We're bequeathing twelve point seven million dollars in bequeathed um uh costs to a future uh to future generations. We possibly will uh and may compromise our ability to respond to future climate change and future uh uh livability in there. So the problem is real, it is quantified, it is based on as objective data as I can. Some of the figures I've got on my rates of return, well, yes, they are questionable, but I did go to that wonderful encyclopedia called Mr Google to ask me uh from assistance to get some sort of numbers, and I'm using a discount factor of six percent that I saw saw in the uh 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 papers. So what happens is, where does this money go? The total renewals in here. One, you've got a total value, and that's the present value of the money. And then the the uh uh you can see that looking at the future value in there, one hundred and eighty million dollars, point five million dollars in today's money becomes seven hundred and twenty-eight million uh point two uh uh five uh m- uh million in uh 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 twenty-one to thirty years. Forty-one percent of council revenue is consumed by depreciation. And that's the fixed charge that all the accounting standards require of us to actually adhere to, otherwise the auditor general tends to get a bit narky if we don't uh follow the generally accepted accounting practices uh in there. And I'm sure that the council doesn't want to be written up by Paul Murray, um as have other councils. At the moment, what we're having is we've got forty-one percent of revenue rates go, of rates revenue going to depreciation. And that's just on the existing asset base. Three percent of our revenue is only going to asset renewal. So basically, it suggests what has got to happen is we've got to grow the pie, and we've also got to look at asset renewal in a slight, in a bigger percentage of the pie. Because basically, at the moment, you require um twenty-six percent more than your rates revenue at the moment uh in there. At the moment, you're funding point six-two uh cents in the dollar, that balloons out to eleven point five what uh cent per dollar uh in over the long term. I know it's possibly not real, there's an election in October, I get it. But the thing is that these are numbers in there. We've got to start making, looking at decisions now, because basically, what's the city going to look like in twenty-one to thirty years about? And all of us have that responsibility to ourselves, even in my my role here, because again, the strata- the execution of strategy, the achievement of strategic plans, is what, you know, my, I understand my remit to do. Budget to our depreciation, look at that gap. Twenty-two point million grows to seventy-one uh uh seventy-one uh million dollars by again, you know, this is the shortfall. And quite honestly, we can't rely on the grant ferries to bail us out of our own decision-making uh uh here, you know, and the road conditions, you know, I I suspect, I don't have to talk to you as elected members that live here in this community about the standards uh of uh uh one of the roses, roads. So I'll go back to, hand you back to Finn uh in there and we'll keep on moving.
All right. Uh I'll just jump back on to just provide another example around lifecycle costs as well, around um how much do things really cost? And again, I think some of you may have heard, is a barbecue really a barbecue before? Uh but I think it's a really important example to share. Um this image on the right, that costs us about twelve thousand dollars in capital costs to provide that to the community. Um sometimes we might even get it for free if a developer gives us to us in one of the new parks. But the reality is, is that ongoing cost is much, much more than twelve thousand dollars. Um we've got ongoing maintenance, renewal of all those assets, electricity, uh cleaning, cleaning's a big one, and then disposal at the end of life. Um looking over fifty years, in today's dollars, it's a hundred and thirteen thousand that will cost the City of Swan for that one barbecue um over that fifty-year lifecycle. If you look at that at the um actual dollars rate, not looking at present value, it's somewhere around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over a fifty-year life, or over the fifty-year time period for a barbecue. Now, considering that so much a twelve thousand dollar barbecue costs us over that period of time, we've got three point two billion worth of assets that we need to maintain and look after um into perpetuity. And that, again, that asset base is growing and growing. Uh another slide that you've seen before, but this is just uh impact of previous decisions on rates where we've been below CPI. So um going back to twenty twenty, uh twenty twenty-one, um the start of COVID, we've got the yellow line there at zero dollars as our baseline comparing to CPI, and the impact of rates decisions that we've made since then. So the orange line heading down from there is the amount we've, or the shortfall, we've, we have, or the gap in rates revenue every year between what our rates revenue is and what it would have been if we raised the rates at that point in time by CPI. So we're currently sitting about twenty-eight million dollars a year behind where we would have been if we had just continued to raise the rates at CPI at the time. However, that's not where we are. Um currently, we have the opportunity to sit along the blue line. That blue line moving forward from there is if we were to increase rates from here at CPI plus one percent into perpetuity. We would then catch up at around, I believe it's twenty forty-two would be the time that we would get back to where we would have been if we just raised rates at CPI back from the twenty twenty-one budget. Um the orange line, again, is pushing that out a few years further, it would do zero this year, and then continue at CPI plus one from that point in time. Again, highlighting it a bit more, the left-hand graph shows how um the gap between increasing rates with CPI versus what we did do in that time, showing that we're currently sitting at around twenty-eight million dollars a year less. Um considering our current, not the next ten years, our average shortfall for uh um asset renewal, we're looking at about eight million dollars a year. That twenty-eight million dollars would have been very handy, would have funded all that and had plenty of money left over. Um and then again, looking on the right-hand side, um the rates deficit over the next period of time and um the renewal gap associated. So looking ahead, um again, looking at the next thirty years, looking at what our uh renewal expenditure requirements are and what our operating budget is. So that, one on the very left-hand side, that's currently what our proposed budget looks like. At thirty-three million dollars of renewal and two hundred and forty-nine million in operating costs. Now, we could, you know, there's always discussion around, well, we just need to change the pie, put more of the money towards renewal and less on our operating costs. And you can do that for a period of time, but the reality is operating costs do continue to grow. So if we look in ten years' time, or over the first ten years, that operating cost grows, and it grows, and it grows. Now, that operating cost is there is growing by the local government cost index projections. Um and same with the renewal requirements over that period of time. Um so the reality is the pie has to grow, um because we just can't afford for it not to. Uh again, just looking at where our operating revenue and operating expenditure are heading. If we were to be growing at operating expenditure at the local government cost index for the next few years, it would only take three years at local government cost index for our operating revenue to exceed our, sorry, operating expenditure to exceed our operating revenue. Um I think that's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. Uh and finally, another discussion I hear plenty is, we're growing our rates through growth. Um we'll get plenty more rates in growth. Um unfortunately, this doesn't assist the problem at all. Um most of our growth, nearly all of our growth is residential properties. Uh residential properties provide us on average one thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars in rates across the city. The average cost to service a residential lot is three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Um residential growth is actually making the gap worse for us, not better for us. Um and that, yeah, that will continue, and it definitely is not, not the solution for us.
Um sorry, sorry. It's not actually a moment where we're having questions, so the question time was earlier. We are just going to continue with the presentation.
Um okay, to continue, this is, you know, uh I, these are some conditions of some of the assets that actually exist um uh within, within the city. I mean to say, just relatively simple, relatively straightforward thing, things that we see every day as we walk around the uh communities within which we live and you got, you people have the privilege to represent. Yeah, not only is the financial condition uh ne- need to be taken in there, there's also questions of what legal risk are we actually going to be uh uh incurring because of the fact that, well, you know, some uh court may well find that we are legally liable because we haven't actually uh, you know, necessarily seen uh risks uh uh repaired uh equipment or replaced equipment in a timely manner. And then, of course, the consequence, well, what is the reputation risk? Yeah, there is unfortunately a uh uh a reputation risk in game. But if, in my closing remarks, there's, we'll quickly flick over and show, well, we're no orphan. This looks like some pictures sourced from other local government authorities in Victoria and New South Wales. But I guess as the Chair of your Audit and Risk and Improvement Committee uh in there, if I flick to the opening uh slide of the presentation in there, there are three points in there which uh I did not talk to at the beginning of the presentation for deliberately, even though I I prefaced the remarks, this being about uh strategic risks uh in there, as we're trying to press the button furiously, I wish my hamster. Uh okay, and there are points one, two, and five in there. I mean to say, stewardship of the assets is a fundamental responsibility. It's pretty much written in the Local Government Act uh uh in there, that's the Reader's Digest version. Um I think one of the key things facing the council uh i- in this now clearly identified and clearly articulated strategic risk, does it sit in the uh risk appetite and then the corollary to that, is this, it is essential that the council's got to balance the infrastructure aspirations of our community with our ability to fund it and do so in a sustainable and a responsible level, because there's not only the asset metrics, there's a number of financial management metrics, uh your own uh promises that you've actually authorized to represent to the community in your plans. But ultimately, I guess that last point's probably the ultimate one here and there, it's a question that uh uh that you people may have to do, is that that ultimately, you may decide to provide anything, but as a council, we can't provide everything. Uh thank you, uh Mayor, and thank you, Finn, for your cooperation in producing this thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh Mr Draper and Mr MacLeod for that presentation. Hope that gave some insight into uh how we come to making decisions this evening.
Uh Madam Mayor, can we ask questions at this point?
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, so Mr Draper, could you get your calculator out and tell us? If um if rates go up by three point eight percent for ten years, what is the percentage increase at the end of ten years?
I wish my calculator was that good and that quick in there. I I, councillor, I don't have a rate uh in- increase in there. But I guess the whole thing is if you you would use it, the revenue that you accumulate over the years, I guess in- increase that, and it obviously would offset the deficits that we would do. But I can't, don't have a precise figure on 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 that, because I was unaware of what rate increase was actually being proposed by.
All right. And if you went up by three point eight percent for forty-five years, I guess you can't calculate that one either.
My mental arithmetic isn't that good.
Fuck it, he's one of those. And the asset sustainability ratio, can you explain that one to us?
I can explain that one to you. So the sustainability ratio is the amount that we are spending on renewal in a, any given year over the depreciation for that year. This was for last financial year, that's sixty-eight percent.
Right. And is it low because we've got more newer assets uh that we're not having to renew than older assets that we are having to renew?
Yes, as the sustainability ratio, we won't be spending mon- money on renewing assets if we don't believe a specific asset requires renewal. However, the renewal requirements year to year do fluctuate significantly, as could be seen in the um in that graph that we showed earlier with the renewal over the next ten years.
Councillor Catalano.
First of all, I've got a question of you, Mayor. Uh and that is, are are we allowed to refer to this presentation in our speech uh in respect of the the rates, you know, decision that's coming up? Or if I refer to this presentation, will I be shut down?
I believe you you can, because it's been presented to you, but I'll just double check with.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So where the reference is relevant to the item being discussed, so if it's under uh fees and charges, uh there's nothing really in terms of this that relates to fees and charges. Where it refers to differential rates, and you draw it back and said, well, what was the purpose for raising the differential rates? And did it cover depreciation? That would be quite a legitimate question.
Well, there's a question for you then. Uh is this presentation basically uh an argument uh to increase the rates by three point eight percent?
Mr CEO.
Thank you. So the presentation is there because it's been requested by the Audit Committee to present. Based on the data, talking about sustainability of your asset base, what it does is it supports the position that you need to be able to raise sufficient revenue. what it does is it supports the position that you need to be able to raise sufficient revenue through rates to be able to cover the asset depreciation needs, not just now, but long term. What it also does is show that because you, we haven't in the past raised the rates in accordance with what depreciation was, there's a significant shortfall now in our capacity to maintain our assets.
Okay, but the other question is that, well, first of all, isn't it correct that we've known about this shortfall for asset renewal for at least four years? Because I think it was highlighted by the Auditor General probably about four years ago. Is that correct?
So through the Chair, I can't refer to what was done four years ago because I wasn't with your local government at that point in time. I don't know whether the Auditor General had a specific review into the City of Swan at that time. In the absence of doing that, what the Auditor General has done generically through performance reporting has indicated that all local governments need to raise enough revenue to maintain their assets.
Oh yes, thank you. Well, I do remember that actually. So the other question then is why have we continued to put money into big infrastructure projects that the community don't want? For instance, you know, Hennelbrook Avenue, Midland Oval, that the public don't want and basic maintenance that, you know, the length of time that I've been on council, I've been alerting council to the fact the maintenance not being done and yet you've got all these grand projects. So why is money still going into grand projects when actually the money should be going into what people want, which is maintenance of their suburbs? It's a question I've been asking for six years now.
Thank you.
So the Through the Chair, we're slightly off target here in terms of what this item is about, which is differential rates. What council has a responsibility of is to fund all of its asset needs. So your rate base raises, does two things. It raises enough money to support your operating costs if you raise enough rates, but also to contribute, as Ms. Turner was saying, to the capital needs for the city. Now, not all of your capital needs are met through rates, so things like Henley Brook Avenue is predominantly funded by a development contribution and also metropolitan and regional road grant. So you're not drawing on rates to fund that project. Similarly for Midland, the new junction project, most of the funding that you're dealing with now is not drawn out of out of municipal rates. In fact, when we showed you the position presented, the net difference between the income earned and the expenditure was, was nil. So neither of those projects are generating this need. But when you have three point two billion dollars worth of assets, leaving those other projects aside, you need to raise enough money to be able to cover them. So the refurbishment of Swan Active Midland, thirty two million dollars to raise enough money to initiate that, that was a long term project. But Madam Mayor, we're drifting away from.
Well, I have got a few more questions because this relates to your argument here that we have to put the rates up because of capital, the, the renewal projects. The thing is, what's the, what's the cost going to be for Swan Active in Ellenbrook? And is that going to come out of rates in the future? And, you know, how's that going to affect the rating in the future? And then the other thing is, we're in regard to Midland Oval, this council and the public were told that actually the, the, the development on there was going to actually provide income from the rates. Now we're here in a presentation that actually the rates doesn't meet the future needs. The argument is not consistent, so, you know, have you got any comment to make about that?
Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Through the Chair, yes, I'm happy to make observation, but we are moving off the general topic. The development at Midland Oval, which council endorses, remember what the function of the administration is, is to give effect to council's decision, will generate additional rate income for the city over the duration of its employment. Council has recently solved or started the process to advertise the sale of significant amount of land in that area, which will bring thousands of additional people living to that area. As you grow the rate base, just whether it be in Midland or in Swanview or in Ellenbrook or elsewhere, you'll get more rate pass. But as pointed out by Mr. MacLeod too, unless you have proportionate growth in your commercial industrial alongside your residential, more of the needs people will have to be met. And that's, that's a significant challenge for us. When it comes to raising sufficient revenue to meet your operating needs, bear in mind, rates raise operating revenue and money for capital. You've got an obligation, it's called intergenerational responsibility, where you have to raise enough money to take the assets you own and hand them on. We have already forecasted to you, as a result of the introduction of Swan Active Ellenbrook, it will require a growth in the operating costs. You are adding a new leisure centre in that area, it will have a growth in the operating costs and a significant growth. And that's been put into all the budget workshops that we presented to council, all the materials on, on file, showing what the spike would be in staffing numbers in two years' time when that comes in. But we're also trying to build Swan Active Ellenbrook in a way which is its operating model is as sustainable as possible, so the use of renewable energy, et cetera, to keep its costs low. Income generation, so those spaces inside the model, gymnasium, the, the spaces there for hydrotherapy and others to generate income to come in. There is no perfect model in all of local government. All local governments, I'll make one last comment, Madam Mayor, all local governments rely on around sixty five percent of their income from rates to pay for their costs.
Thank you very much. Councils, I'll ask, Council Henderson.
Can I just correct the record? The Council Catalano said that the residents didn't want Midland Oval redevelopment. And that's not true, a survey showed that they did.
Thank you. Councilors, are there any further questions before we continue? No, I thank you again for your presentation, gentlemen, and a safe trip home. Councilors, we move on to part eight, which is reports.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I would like to move a procedural motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ringo.
I'd like to move a procedural motion that council resolves to suspend clause eleven point five one of the City of Swan's meeting procedures, local law two thousand and twenty three, for forty eight hours after this meeting to enable the CEO to implement and act on the outcomes of the decisions made at this meeting on twenty third of June, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you. Do you have a second, there? Counselor Miles, is anyone against? Do you wish to debate it?
No, you can't debate it.
Oh, you can't debate it? Thank you. So that, those in favour? So I have Counselor Ringo, Counselor Jones, Counselor McCulloch, Counselor Miles, Counselor Sanino, Counselor Henderson, Counselor Prudorf Nick, is that hand up yet? And myself, and those against? Is Counselor, oh, sorry, Counselor Bowman, my apologies.
I'm against.
Oh, sorry, just pop your hand down for a minute, I haven't called that yet.
Yeah, you did.
Now it's those against. So it was Counselor Catalano, Counselor Singh, Counselor Bowman, Deputy Mayor and Counselor Howlett. That's carried eight five. Okay. And we move to proposal turn at motion by Counselor Bowman. If you'd like to read out your motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yep, the council resolves to one, receive and note the individual submissions received during the advertising period, detail the attachments and consider the city's response to each submission as contained in the above report. Two, approves the twenty five, twenty six differential general rates with modifications as follows, and I believe they're on the screen, the residential amount being point eight, point oh eight oh three three eight, minimum rate thousand and five, commercial industrial point one oh three two six two one five seven oh, unimproved values, UV general, I believe it's on screen now, point oh oh three oh nine six three, minimum rate a thousand and five. Armlands, point zero zero two four seven three six, minimum rates a thousand and five, specified area rates as per on the screen for Midland Drainage, the Haysmill Guildford, the GRV for Haysmere Industrial Area and the UV Haysmere Industrial Area Infrastructure. Number three, applies to the Minister for the Department of Local Government Sports and Culture Industries for approval to levy heavy industry rating category at point one seven three one oh eight per dollar. That is more than twice the lowest residential rate in the dollar at minimum nineteen hundred. Four, applies to the Minister for the Department of Local Government Sport and Culture Industries for approval to levy UV commercial rating category at point zero zero five two five three five per dollar, that is more than twice the lowest farmland rate the dollar at minimum one thousand and five. And the reasons for the alternatives, many of the submissions received in the advertising period address the cost of living and need for prudence in the city's expenditure. The city's adopted long term financial plan provided for a rate increase of CPI plus one percent for twenty five, twenty six. The Perth annual CPI increase to March twenty twenty five was two point eight percent, and this was published on the thirtieth of April, twenty twenty five. Adopting a lower rate increase for one that is still sufficient to sustain current service levels and prevent closure of any community facility could still be achieved by adopting these proposed rates. And as the officer's report advises, the funding shortfall could be accommodated by delaying commencement of Gildon Potters Capital Works Project, plus deferring some municipal funding expenditure in the twenty six, twenty seven financial year. And I so do, so do move.
Thank you, Counselor Bowman. I'll ask if you have a second, there. Counselor Henderson. Is anyone against? Do you wish to debate it?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I won't stand because it's probably not appropriate on teams. Madam Mayor, this motion is a three point eight percent increase. This is what the council long term financial plan that was adopted by this council said we would do. CPI is currently at two point eight percent. When you add two point eight percent plus one percent, you get three point eight percent. Madam Mayor, the reason why we can do this as opposed to the four percent is we're delaying some of the capital expenditure for Guildford Potters. It'll be spread over two financial years, so three hundred and forty thousand dollars will be spread into the twenty six, twenty seven year. Madam Mayor, there has been no other alternatives moved to this council. Madam Mayor, there has been no suggestion by councils to cut expenditure. No councillor has requested to reduce any of our services and no councillor has agreed.
Excuse me, Counselor Bowman, just one moment, point of order. Sorry, what was your point of order? Can you just, can you, no. Sorry, if it's not ready, Deputy Mayor, can you continue, please, Counselor Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, the last time that somebody tried to do some reductions, it was reductions on things like governance, which provided no information whatsoever and was unrealistic.
So it's section seven point two.
Just one moment, please.
One F, the presentation of false or misleading information.
Deputy Mayor, when I call the point of order, you need to slow down, please, and let me ask Counselor Bowman to pause and then I'll ask you for the point of order.
Stand up, Madam Mayor, but you interrupted me, so I'm just reading it in.
And if you could please give everyone a chance to get their copy and have a look at the point of order, please. What was your point of order? What was the point of order? I asked you to repeat it, please.
Okay, I'll repeat it slightly. Seven point two, point of order, that's on page nineteen. One, F, the presentation of false or misleading information, there was suggestion that councils had not moved produced a budget that could support a lower rate rise, had not identified savings, are simply not correct.
Thank you, I'll uphold that. Counselor Bowman, if you could just return to your speech, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Counselor Johnson, the Deputy Mayor, moved a motion or attempted to move a motion that did not identify where those savings were coming from. Clearly, he said fifty percent reduction to governance. Counselor Johnson did not know.
Just one moment, please, Counselor Bowman.
Seven point two, so point of order. Basically, it's not relevant.
Sorry, it's seven point two, but what part of the local meeting procedures are you referring to? If you don't have it ready.
It's the relevance, relevance section.
I'm sorry, you didn't manage to give me the relevance section, thank you. If you could continue, please, Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, in light of no councillor wanting to reduce services, in light of no councillor wanting to cut capital costs and providing those to council, a three point eight percent rate increase as this motion says.
Sorry, Counselor Bowman, just one moment, please. Deputy Mayor, what is your point of order?
Seven point two, one, one, a breach of any written law, and that is six point eight, relevant, so motions I may have moved in the past are not relevant, we're talking about differential rates.
Thank you, Counselor Bowman. If you could please resume and not refer to that.
Madam Mayor, three point eight percent is the only motion that's been put forward by any councillor in tonight's meeting that shows where the savings can come from. Three point eight percent, Madam Mayor, is exactly what our long term financial plan that was adopted by this council. All councillors of the CPI, which has been shown to be two point eight percent plus one percent, and Madam Mayor, that's why I'm moving this motion. It is lower than the four percent that was advertised, but it is consistent with our long term financial plan that was adopted by this council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bowman. Counselor Henderson is the second of.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counselor Bowman. I'd like to concentrate on the long term financial plan as that obviously this feeds into being able to operate and justify. Councillors, we all agreed to the plans and they come out at a cost. It's pretty simple. Inflation is fundamental, can't escape that. And clearly, we've been shown that if we do not put away for the future, we're going to be in a lot of trouble. So I want to come back to some fundamentals. What kind of money are we spending in our long term financial plan? That's putting at us a point where we are right now to have to expend the money we want to expend. Things like, what are we spending on community arts programme as an example? Our leisure services as an example, it's an eighteen million dollar cost, we only get nine million back. Our planning approvals, for instance, are government controlled, we can't charge any more than a certain amount. Our planning approvals come in at a cost of, I think it was six point one six million. These are all part of our, our budget and what I want to say about that is that we have a responsibility to say, okay, what are the things we should, should we be saying that we need to cut back? What are the things? I've read lots and lots of the responses that people put in. And I didn't see anything constructive about what we shouldn't be doing or what we should be doing to change it. And this is the key, if we, if we stay on that same path, we have no choice other than to have a, a rate rise of three point eight percent. The one, the three years that we had of no rate rises, fundamentally, we had to do that because the community were really struggling and business were struggling, everything was really, really tough. That's put us behind the eight ball really badly and that's a fundamental. We're really behind that eight ball. We've got to get back to, to equalising that line that was shown earlier. So the, the key things are, what are our input costs? And by the way, people are saying, why aren't my verges being done? More simply, we had to cut back all those costs. We couldn't, couldn't do them because we had we can only spend as much money as we get out of our budget. So these are, these are fundamentals in forming a budget. If you get all those things right, you can have less rates if you've got less expenditure and we need to be the ones that identify what those expenditures are going to be. So we need to do that in our budget lead up. And, and the key is, it's our responsibility to do that before, not necessarily now. Now we're at the three point.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Last, is there anyone against the motion? A question?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few questions. I wonder if the staff can help me. Please, could you advise me what portion of my rate bill is collected on behalf of the state government?
Mr. Travakis?
Through the Chair, so for twenty four, twenty five, total annual charges of two thousand seven hundred and forty five, three hundred and forty eight dollars are collected by the state government for ASL. Um, three hundred and forty eight dollars are collected by the state government for ESL.
Thank you. Another question. Can you advise what services these entail that are collected for the state government?
Uh, yes, through the chair, so it's the emergency services levy. Um, so that's a compulsory charge for all property owners and funds the cost of WA's fire and emergency services, um, including all career fire stations, volunteer fire brigades and state emergency services.
Um, another question, please. If you look at my rate bill over the past four years, how much of my council rate portion increased over the years, the four years in dollars?
Through the chair, uh, so for the two thousand twenty one twenty two financial year, uh, council rates, uh, there was a nil increase. For two thousand and twenty two twenty three, there was another nil increase. For two thousand twenty three twenty four, there was a hundred and twenty one dollar increase. And for two thousand twenty four twenty five, a sixty three dollar increase.
Thank you. That works out to three dollars thirty six a week for the first and a dollar twenty for the second. Another question, please. Out of the six listed similar tier one councils, as per the report, is it true that there's only one council June de la that is marginally lower than the city of Swan?
Through the chair, yes, as per the table, that's correct.
Can you please comment on the outstanding or slow roadworks as stated in the residents' feedback? Is it true that the city of Swan is waiting on other state government departments to complete work so we can continue the roadworks, for example, moving light posts that run down the centre of the road?
Uh, Mr. Sutherland.
Oh, through the chair, yes, that's correct.
Can you please confirm that when the Ellenbrook residents voted to cease security patrols, the city stopped charging rate payers for the service, hence the rates went down?
Mr. Travasquez.
Uh, yes, through the chair, so the Ellenbrook security levy was charged a hundred dollars per property and was last charged in twenty seventeen, tw- um, eighteen. Uh, rates were reduced by this exact amount once that charge was removed.
And one final question, please. Can you please confirm that the town planning control of the Swan Valley is no longer under the city of Swan? Is it controlled by the Swan Valley Act?
Point, point of order, Madam Mayor.
Point of order, I, thank you. Just one moment, councillor Bowman, if you could just resume your seat, please, councillor Jones. Councillor Bowman? Your point of order is?
Seven point two one C relevance. We're talking about differential rates, not Swan Valley Planning Act.
Yes, that was just about to call that, thank you. So that one we'll have to bypass, thanks. Okay. Did you have a further question?
No, that's fine.
That's it. Thank you, councillor Jones. Uh, councillor, deputy mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I'll begin by foreshadowing my uh zero percent uh rate rise alternative motion that I wrote all by myself. Um, councillors, I asked Mr. Draper if he could tell me what ten years of three point eight percent rate rises would be after all these graphs and fantastic information we got, but we didn't get that information well. You can easily work it out on your own calculator, councillors, it's forty five percent rise. After, so after ten years, um, the average rate rise, the average rates will be about two thousand dollars. And um after forty five years, when councillor Hayden Miles has retired.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, deputy mayor, if you could just, deputy mayor, if you could resume your seat. Councillor Bowman, what was your point of order, please?
Seven point two one C relevance. We're talking about twenty five twenty six differential rates.
Thank you. I'll uphold that. Um, deputy mayor, if you could refrain from making comments about um councils and their, their future, please.
Well, um, yeah, I assume it has a future. Like, every year, with additional properties, um, as a result of being a growth council, our revenue from rates goes up by about two million dollars a year, even if the rate in the dollar stays the same. That's just a simple fact. And uh, councillors, our costs don't go up uh in proportion because we've got fixed costs. We don't keep having to add an extra CEO or two every few years. It's just a variable cost that rises. So as a growth council, we should be getting an economy of scale. Um, councillors, as we've seen, there's plenty of scope for savings. You only have to read through the um, the submissions. We've had zero percent rate rises before and the sky's not falling in. And we're here to represent the community. Remember, we're not here to represent the CEO or the staff or the department or anybody else. So let's just have a look at some of these submissions.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Just one moment, deputy mayor, if you could resume your seat, please.
Seven point two, seven point two one E offensive assaults, insulting insinuations. I'm here to represent the rate payers. Councillor Johnson talks about, we're here to do a rate increase about the CEO. That's not correct, Madam Mayor. I find that insulting comments.
You did refer to the CEO, thank you. If you could just keep your comments respectable, please. Thank you.
We're here to represent the community. And what the community are saying, if we look on page twenty two, councillor Bowman, it says, uh, the submission at the top, it's not enough to apply blanket percentage increases year on year. As an accountant, I can confidently state that responsible financial management in the private sector involves thorough scrutiny of expenditure, challenging historical costs and renegotiating contracts to achieve better value, not simply inflating previous budgets. A little bit further down the same page, the recent vote to raise the rates has shown how out of touch these particular councils are with the way things are today. And with those who voted them in, that's what it says in here. Further down, we have lived in Movida Estate Midvale for two years. In that time, if there's ever been requests for services in the estate, street sweeping, asking for median strip to be planted, extra, they take, tuck more trees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we pay top dollars to live in this estate, not forgetting its Midvale. It's no beachside suburb with multi-million dollar views. We pay this money and we're seeing no benefit to our specific area. Another person says, I object to the size of the increase, much greater than the CPI at a time when households are already under pressure, there is much wastage in council that can be cut to save money and also work efficiencies to be increased to cost in, to, to assist in cost reductions. Priorities need to be better managed. All in all, a tone deaf increase with no thought for those doing it tough. That's exactly what it says in.
And that was your third.
Um, like an exten- like an extension, Madam Mayor, two minutes extension, just to listen to a bit of the community.
We have councillor Catalano, councillor Singh, uh, councillor Pudovnik. I'm sorry, it's only for council members. Deputy mayor and councillor, um, Howlett and those against. Okay, councillor Ringo, councillor Jones, councillor McCulloch, councillor Hayden Miles, councillors Anino, councillor Henderson and myself. And the extension is not granted. Oh, and councillor Bowman, thank you. That was myself. Okay, so asking anyone who'd like to speak for the motion. Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councill, councillors, we are all in the same situation, some of worse off than others when it comes to the cost of living and bills. I have read every single submission by the residents and have a few observations. Many of the responses have very similar wording, almost as if a template had been offered. I've asked myself the following, if residents had received an invitation to comment where the facts offered unfactual. I've never run my campaign, most of my um debate here is relating to the comments that have been made. I've never run my campaign with, to, with a promise to know of a known rates rise. As I understand the reasons, rate rises are required. The city of Swan is run in a manner that achieves the goals it sets uh over a sustained period of time. This involves growth, good customer service, value for money, employee morale and sustainability. After reading the responses, I felt very saddened for the city staff. Many said the city does nothing for them. I'd hate to have a job that after doing my best, I was told repeatedly that I did nothing. If the city is perceived to do nothing for the residents, then I wonder who runs the libraries, youth centres, aged care services, leisure centres, sporting fields, parks, rubbish collections, roads, emergency service and the list goes on. And I've actually seen rubbish trucks picking up the rubbish. As per my questions earlier, my rates have not gone up exponentially. In fact, there was no rate rise for three years. A four percent rate rise or three point eight as councillor Bowman is proposing on two thousand five hundred dollars is a hundred dollars a year, that's less than two dollars a week. Stop paying the councillors, said a few. I can only speak for myself. I work an average at thirty eight hours a week on council issues. I get calls and visits seven days a week. After tax, I get an allowance of around twenty one thousand. If you work that out, my hourly rate is roughly ten dollars sixty two. Who in their right mind would work for that hourly rate? When most of the time, she received nasty comments. I would just like to finish with one example of what good coun- councillors receive frequently. Facebook posts. Jones has finally woken up in the back row. She breathes the air other people should breathe, takes up council furniture, does nothing in her community. I sent the gentleman a private message inviting him to have a coffee with me as he obviously didn't know what I do. And I was going to explain to him. If councillor Bowman.
Councillor Jones.
That's fine, I'll leave it there, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask if there's anyone like to speak against the motion. Councillor Catalano.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, rate payers, um, that I've talked to and I've talked to a lot of them, um, pay their rates and they expect as a priority that their suburbs will be maintained. That is what they expect, their rates will be spent on. They don't expect, I mean, yes, there's, then there's all the leisure services and the other bits and pieces. But they expect that their suburbs are maintained. And they expect that because they own property and they want their property to be located in a desirable suburb, those will maintain and looked after. That's what they expect their rates to be spent on. Then there's the perks, the swimming pools and the, you know, the library services and, and all the other things. Yeah, they're, they're great, they're great, uh, if we can afford them. And then the next thing is.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Just one moment, councillor Bowman. If you could just resume your seat, please, councillor Catalano. What was your point of order, councillor Bowman?
Seven point two one E, the perks of a library and a recreation centre, I find that offensive and insulting.
For what reason?
These are not perks, Madam Mayor. These are essential services that our community request and we provide.
Thank you, councillor Bowman. I'll uphold your point of order.
That's an opinion I have and I'm entitled to have that opinion here on this council because other people in the community share that with me.
You're entitled to your opinion and I'm entitled to mine. That's the finish? Thank you. I'll ask, uh, does anyone like to speak for the motion? I did ask you if you'd like to resume, please, and you didn't. Thank you.
You talk. So, uh, the one thing they don't expect their rates to be spent on are, uh, unnecessary, uh, were badly thought out, uh, projects that end up costing rate payers. Where we, for instance, we've got these now, these drainage issues that are arising in, in uh Swan Valley from, you know, the, the development along Dayton and Brabham. How much is that going to cost rate payers in the future? So the point is that this uh reassessment of, you know, the structuring of our rates because suddenly uh according to the briefing session, we've got, uh, you know, a, a bit of a void or a, or a gap between, you know, uh, maintaining our suburbs and what we can afford. This should have been looked at. The whole budget should be looked at in its entirety to make sure that the priority is maintenance of suburbs. And then we've got to structure and work out what, uh, or even if we can afford to fix problems. And then if, uh, you know, and they've been, they've been, uh, the, the public's told us about them. These problems exist. How much are they going to cost? We need to know. These have got to be factored in to the future. And then we can look and see if we can even afford all of the other things like the extra money that's going to be spent on the Ellenbrook Pool and the Recreation Centre. You know, you can't just keep spending millions and millions and hundreds of millions of dollars, fifty million dollars on Middle and Oval. You just cannot keep spending and it continues, money continues to be spent on that. And then say, oh, suddenly we don't have any money for upkeeping suburbs. That should have been at the top of the list all the way along and it should be at the top of the list now.
Anyone like to speak for the motion? Would anyone like to speak for the motion? Anyone like to speak against the motion? Oh, councillor Bowman, you're right of reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, councillor Jones talked about all the submissions that were saved, I take the councillor's attention, page seventy four. Uh, I too do agree that it seems like there's pro forma that's been sent, especially when one response on the bottom of page seventy four is directly to a councillor. Madam Mayor, we look at councillor Catalado, he said we can't keep on spending. Councillor Catalano has not voted to reduce any spending. When I was being put to council, she actually voted for increasing spending. Madam Mayor, councillor Johnson talked about the increase in the number of properties. Madam Mayor, the report quite clearly shows there's a five point nine percent increase in the cost to the city of Swan. Three point eight percent rate increase, the extra two point one percent will be actually from the increase in the properties. That's why, Madam Mayor, we do not need a five point nine percent increase, like a lot of our metro councils are actually doing. Madam Mayor, three point eight percent is what our long-term financial plan is. Madam Mayor, three point eight percent, which is CPI plus one percent, is what this council agreed to in their long-term financial plan. Madam Mayor, having been one of the only few councillors that have gone to every budget submission, every budget workshop, Madam Mayor, I am fully across what the staff have been doing. And Madam Mayor, I have not seen any other suggestions from other councils put forward to reduce or cut any expenditure. Madam Mayor, I so move my motion.
Thank you, councillor Bowman. I now put that to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ringo. Councillor Jones. Councillor McCulloch. Councillor Miles, councillor Zanino, councillor Henderson, councillor Bowman. It's out of order when I've got to draw on here. Uh, councillor Pudovnik. I'll put you in. And myself. And those against? Councillor Catalano, councillor Singh. And ca- uh, deputy mayor and councillor Howlett. The motion is carried nine four. Thank you, councillors. And now we move to eight point one point two, which is the schedule of fees and charges for two thousand and twenty five twenty six. I'll need a council member to move the officer's recommendation. Thank you, councillor Miles. And do I have a seconda? Thank you, councillor Jones. Is there anyone against? It's carried unanimously. Thank you to the members in the gallery and to councillors and to staff this evening for coming in for this special meeting of council. That brings us to the conclusion of tonight's meeting. And I now close this meeting at seven nineteen and have a safe trip home.